Calwinski. Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here. And now we have seven present. One electronically, two absent. Six present, one electronic. Next up, Mayor Edra.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, Mr. President. Megan just handed all of us our gaming report for the first quarter 2023. As you'll notice, we took in $3.3 million. Capital Improvement Board got a little over $2 million. Mayor Discretionary, almost a half a million dollars. Each council district, about eighty-two thousand six hundred. Gaming Advisory Committee, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. Rainy Day Fund, one hundred and thirty-two thousand. I know gaming revenues are down. I would expect that to be the new normal, so I think we should get used to that. The good news is, under the system we implemented during the pandemic, a year like this is the type of year we would have had trouble with because we're ramping down a little bit, and usually in situations like that, our spending didn't correct itself for over a year or so. The good news is, we only spend what we have. This is what we have. I know Megan's got individual reports for all six council districts on there. If you have any questions, I urge you to direct them her way. So as part of my address, I also wanted to cover that United Hospital Services opened up their West Point Industrial Complex. They had their, it basically was an open house. They built a state-of-the-art hospital and clinical laundry facility. Hammond's chosen as their second location due to our great business climate here and the location. The only other location they have is in Indianapolis, so two locations in the state. The grand opening was March 1st, 2023, $18 million investment. By the end of the year, they expect to have 100 new jobs there, and they're already planning a future expansion, so that was good news. I want to congratulate our economic development team for helping pull that off. I know Councilman Mark had a lot to do with that over the years also, so thank you for all the help. We've had some movement take place over the last few weeks on the Board of Public Works' safety. I haven't officially updated you all on what we're doing with that, so I wanted to go ahead and bring you up to speed. At the beginning of the year, we were rolling into, well, towards the end of last year, my three appointees to the Board of Public Works and Safety was the Assistant Chief of Police Jeff Long, was Johnny Perez, who was a leader of our sanitation and the number two in the Department of Public Works, and Kevin Margraft, the Deputy Fire Chief. Since that time, both Johnny Perez, Johnny Perez took the buyout. Kevin Margraft retired as well, and I replaced both of those with Tanisha Greenwell, who is in the Controller's Office, formerly worked for the Hammond Police Department. She has great background. She's great with numbers, has a law enforcement background, adds a great presence to the Board of Public Works. I also promoted Donnie Kalina to the Board of Public Works as my appointee as well. Donnie Kalina currently works in code enforcement, but you probably all remember him from Hammond EMS and throughout the community. So Don Kalina, Tanisha Greenwell, and Jeff Long are the three, my three appointees to the Board of Public Works and Safety. I'm very proud of that board. I think it's a great board, and I appreciate their service. You all have heard this by now as well, but I just wanted to reiterate it. We haven't talked about it since I took over, or since this occurred. Africa Tarver surprised me in February with bad news. Good news for her, bad news for me. Her good news was she got a job in Texas. She's going to be closer to her daughter. She's going to be close to her extended family. It's a promotional opportunity for her. Bad news for Hammond and for me is, it's going to be hard to replace Africa. She's been excellent for us. Since the day I walked into City Hall, she's been promoted time and time again through my administration to where she is now. She was my appointee to the Regional Development Authority, did an excellent job on a regional basis there, and she is also the Head of Planning and Development. Very proud of her. I wish her well. She is officially now retired and moved off the payroll. Since that time, I promoted Ann Anderson, who had always, and held a variety of jobs, moved all the way up through the system. She formerly was the Head of Economic Development. She's now the Director of Planning and Development, filling Africa's old position. Phil Talon, my Chief of Staff, has been appointed to the Regional Development Authority to fill in for Africa's appointment. And Juan Moreno, who's here today, was formerly the Economic Development TIF Coordinator, and he's been promoted to the Head of Economic Development. Congratulations to all of you. I'm looking forward to working with you and bringing in more and more economic development opportunities to our city. Wanted to update you on two more things. Met recently with School City Hammond. I met with the superintendent, met with school board members, talking about what's going on with the lawsuit with the State of Indiana as it relates to Clark High School and Gabbett High School. I think the school city's doing great things, but I did want them to know that my patience is starting to run thin on the high school situation, that we're not going to stand by as a city and watch our old high schools fall into disrepair and slowly dilapidate before our eyes. So I let the superintendent know that we're hoping to see more action in a quicker timeframe. I wanted to update the council that Clark High School, we own the parking lots. We own the athletic fields, the city does, and we're planning to move forward real soon with a subdivision there. We can't do anything with the schools themselves until the schools decide to move forward. They're afraid because of the lawsuit requiring them to offer it to a charter school. We're sort of at a standstill. Gabbett High School, the complete footprint is still owned by the school city Hammond, 100% of it. So, and last but not least, good news for once for Hammond, bad news for other communities. We have, one of our customer communities, City of Lansing, has been on a long-term contract with City Hammond that was extremely beneficial to Lansing. That contract expired. So we're renegotiating a new contract with City of Lansing. We expect to be, have it very favorable terms for the City Hammond, which affects everybody in this room to help better capitalize. They have a water department, which is good news for everybody. Right now, Lansing's buying water from us about a dollar per 1,000 gallons, selling it to their residents at about $6 for 1,000 gallons. We're proposing they're buying it for more market rate, which is in the mid-3s. So I'll keep you up to date on that. Lansing is in receipt of a letter from the CEO of the Hammond Water Department informing them that the contract is expired, and we're seeking to move forward with new rates. So I don't know if you all have any questions, but it's nice to be back. Good to see you. If you don't have any questions, I'll move on. So, Mr. President?
I have none. Anybody have a question for the mayor?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Mayor, I think at the last meeting, Phil touched base with us around there being an analysis done of, like, city salaries.
Yeah.
Wanted to know if there's, like, an update on that or a timeline of when you think that report will be done?
Well, I'm not moving on salaries until the contracts are up. Contracts aren't going to be up until the end of next year. So when I'm negotiating, probably about a year from now, I want to have this material ready because, you know, I'm not sure if we're low. I don't think we're that low, and quite frankly, we have to remember that these are unions we're negotiating with, and, you know, they bargain for what they have, just like, you know, just like we do. So it's hard to break a union contract in the middle and give away taxpayer money when we're not obligated to under the contract, so. But we are doing that research. If there are glaring deficiencies, we'll take care of it. I could assure you, and we'll have to take care of it during the next negotiations, so.
Because I know there were some, I know we've been looking for CDL drivers, and there were some complaints about the salary for our CDL drivers that we upholstered compared to other cities, and that might be part of the reason why we weren't able to hire anybody for those positions.
We're not having that much trouble. I'll be honest with you. I see new drivers coming in all the time. We, and, you know, salary-wise, maybe somebody wants to be a truck driver, maybe, you know, and they have a CDL, maybe they make more, but we have 14 paid days off that everybody gets. We have personal days. We have vacation days. There's a lot of benefits that you get working for the City Hammond that a lot of other companies couldn't provide. So I would want to look at the whole thing, though, Councilman. I mean, I love the people that work in Public Works. I love our drivers. We need them. They're integral to our city, but I can't be giving away taxpayer money that we're not obligated to give away. I got to be careful as mayor because if we do it for them, we have a lot of employees, and everybody's important. So I have to be cautious. That's all I'm saying. But we are going to get somebody to follow that up, Councilman. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
Regarding the water to Lansing or other communities. In Illinois, we have no cap, right? I mean, we did have a cap in Indiana. Or has that changed?
Good question. In Indiana, we're regulated by the IURC. In Illinois, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission doesn't control the sale of water. Okay? But market forces do, Councilman. So we can't just set any price. We have to be cognizant of what Chicago's charging, and we have to be cheaper than them. And we also have, it's complicated because we have to be able to get water to that community, which is expensive because every community you go through, they pay a toll, so to speak. So by the time I can get the water to Homewood or Flossmore, it's got to be competitive with Chicago, but you still got to go through Chicago Heights. You still got to go through communities to get there, and everybody charges a toll. So you have, there's a lot of things that go into what you could charge it. We have a sales contract in Chicago Heights with the mayor of Chicago Heights, where the mayor of Chicago Heights, who happens to be David Gonzalez right now, sells Hammond water at $2 per 1,000 gallons. That's marketable. We give it to him cheaper than, you know, we even get it as residents here because he needs to be able to sell that water to other communities and pay the tolls that go along with it. So I've learned a lot about water over the last 20 years, but we're doing a really good job. We recently brought in Homewood. I think Flossmore is either on or about to come on, and we're hoping to get Olympia Field soon. We're really starting to make a bigger footprint on the south side of Chicago, Councilman.
That's good.
Thank you.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Mayor, did we contract with an outside consultant for these salaries, to look at salaries, or are we just doing that on our own?
No, we're not doing it on our own. But I think it's a firm that's going to do that for us, Councilman. I haven't seen exactly. I know that there was some talk with a firm that knows somebody that does this. I don't know if we're going through the firm or if we're going to that professional, but we want this on a grand scale. We want to be, when I'm giving information to, because if the Teamsters have contacted Councilman Barry, you know, the firemen and the policemen are contacting me or contacting other people, this is, they're all going to come at the mayor next year trying to get money. And unless you guys want me writing big checks, we're going to have to be armed with facts. That's what we're trying to do, Councilman, is we're getting ready for next year. Next year is going to be tough negotiation, I imagine.
We haven't signed with anybody yet. We don't know what it's going to cost.
I saw some correspondence. I haven't seen, I imagine it's going to cost a couple bucks. I mean, it's not going to be super cheap, but the thought is, if we spend, let's say, $20,000 on people doing this type of research, we'd save hopefully more than that, armed with facts, so that when the Teamsters approach Councilman, we have facts that we can answer with, and it's been researched by somebody that's knowledgeable, so.
So when they do that, do they look at all Lake County then, or?
They'll look all over the state where we're going, Councilman, which is handy info. Believe it or not, we're losing police officers to Indy. We're competing with Indy right now. We're competing with Carmel and Fishers. It's a new day, you know, and the employer, us, we're in a different position. We have to compete to keep our employees, so. But we do a good job, by the way. Hammond does generally. That's why I'm sort of skeptical when I hear that, Councilman Barry. I appreciate you bringing it up, but I get sort of skeptical because we offer a pretty good package. It's not easy to leave us. We offer a really good package for our employees, so. And I know people in Public Works, they're doing 65, the typical person with overtime. So it's a decent job, so thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. President? Mayor?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
With regard to the CDL drivers, they start at a certain level, and then after a probationary period, they increase, correct?
True.
So it's not like an extended period of time?
It's 90 days.
Okay.
A probation, and if you're a part-timer, we usually waive that. Usually, usually, when we're bringing in somebody from Public Works, usually they're part-timers that were promoted into full-time. We've already checked them out. We know they're good employees. They got their CDL. And usually, in a case like that, we would just waive their probation. We'd just bring them right in at the higher rate because they've already worked for us. We do that at Sportsplex a lot also. Full, part-timers that move to full-time, we waive their probationary period because they've been part-timers for so long. We do that for almost every position, Councilman.
Thank you.
Sorry my report's taking so long. It's been a couple weeks since I've been here, though, so. Appreciate you guys. Keep up the good work, and if you need anything, just yell. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Let it be noted that Councilman Spatelli and Councilman Kowinski are now in chambers. Next up is approval of minutes. Councilman Spatelli.
Minutes from February 27, 2023. Can you place on file, please?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson. Approval of minutes. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated March 1st, 2023, and ending with claims dated March 8th, 2023. Claim number 1296 through claim number 1662 inclusive, for a total of $24,972,605.33.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines and second by Councilman Tyler for approval of claims, the aforementioned amount. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli. Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. That's a 9-0, claims. Next up, public hearings.
Item A, ordinance 23-07, sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Economic Development and Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeeper's Tax Fund for Economic Development purposes in 2023. Item B, ordinance 23-08, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance amending fund number for FY 2021 Justice Assistant Grant Program Funds awarded to the City of Hammond Police Department. Item C, ordinance 23-09, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli. An ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the Annual Action Plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2023.
Okay, we now have public hearings open for 2307, 2308, and 2309. Would anybody like to, from the public, like to speak on these? Anybody from the public like to speak on these? Anybody? Hearings are not closed. Public hearings are not closed. Next up, communications.
Mr. President?
Councilman Torres.
We all got letters from students of Hammond Central regarding certain topics of social interest that they're interested in. A response from us, or attending one of their forums. They got a topic on gun violence to poverty, drug abuse. They got one on wage equality, teenage child neglect because of LGBTQ+, police brutality, healthcare in Indiana, poverty concern in our community, teenage gun violence. So kind of urged our members, our colleagues, to look at these letters and see if they can respond to any one of these. And I'm sure they would appreciate it. They're signed by various students, so I guess they have different groups.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else have a comment on that?
Mr. President? I have a scheduled meeting with Mr. Kyleman, who teaches social studies at Hammond High, and also Councilman Tyler. And I think we're going to discuss that either at that time or later time because I have another meeting I have to be at at that time. In the 4th District, a young man was killed playing basketball from someone shooting a gun up in the air on the 4th of July, I believe. And it was tragic, and it just came down. What goes up must come down, and that was a sad incident. So we're going to talk about, you know, the council passed gunfire ordinance last year, '22, and we all voted to pass that. So you can't go out and shoot automatic weapons on New Year's Eve or 4th of July or any other day legally at Hammond. It's illegal to do that. So, thank you.
So what I'm hearing, is there a time that they're looking for council members to address the students?
Yes, that was addressed to all of us, the letter. And for gun violence specifically, and then there was another letter that was sent to the mayor's office, I believe, but I'm not sure what that.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, just to clarify, they have an event this Thursday that's open to the public from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., where they're doing project-based learning and kind of sharing on their projects. And they invited us to attend that meeting, of course, is at Hammond Central High School, this Thursday, March 16th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. But then there's also, it seems like, an open invitation for us to come to their classroom and speak to the students, either virtually or in person at any point we are available.
So if any council people would like to attend at Thursday at 5:00, some of us have things going on, but we can also try to arrange and maybe talk to the classrooms if we so choose?
Correct. Yep.
All right, any other communications? Any other communications?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I would like to just extend my condolences to the families of Pastor Wayne Hudson and Deacon Edward Roper. Both of their services were this past weekend, and I think it was just a testament to how much these two gentlemen meant to our community by the amount of people that came out and showed support, and the amount of love and energy that was invoked in those rooms. So just want to, once again, extend my condolences to those families. And I also want to congratulate the Hammond Central Boys Basketball Team on their regional victory. They were able to defeat Mitchell Waka this Saturday and will play this upcoming Saturday for semi-state. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tyler. Any other communications?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
I'm going to need some help on this with the details because I know you are very involved in the St. Patrick's Day Parade coming up this Friday in Hessville, beginning at 6:30. And it starts off from?
Harding School.
Harding School, alrighty, there we go. And it's billed as a twilight parade, so we're going to have lights on the cars and all that kind of stuff. It'll be kind of cool for the kids, so everyone, please come out and enjoy the green because after all, everybody's Irish on St. Patty's Day.
Any other communications? Communications? Any other communications? Communications first. Committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilman Warple.
Capital Improvement Board met in March 6th under new business, a funding allocation for the Summer Street Reconstruction, Columbia Avenue to Indianapolis Boulevard, with the Indiana Department of Transportation, in the amount of $1,870,125.73 was approved. Funding allocation for Florida Avenue Infrastructure Milestone Contractors North in the amount of $249,466.33 was approved. And the funding allocation for Florida Avenue Infrastructure Construction Engineering, NICE Engineering, was awarded in the amount of $84,100. Councilman Kowinski attended the meeting and inquired about, and see if I wrote my notes are good, repaving 119th, Calumet to Atchison. That's what my notes say, so I take bad notes. And he also requested Johnson Street from 138th Street to the CSX tracks be repaved. And he again inquired about the stop sign on 142nd and Calumet. A Holman, that was approved in September and was required on when it'll be installed. Councilman Emerson was also there and inquired about state line. Is that correct, from 265th, on 165th?
Yes, sir.
The reconfiguration there, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, it's a dangerous, and I had said earlier, unsightly intersection, but it's also dangerous, people coming over from Illinois and hitting the guardrail and whatnot.
And that's being straightened out, I believe, or something like that, they said?
They're dealing with the guardrail. That's, Illinois has to straighten that out for that. I don't think that's ever going to happen, but I don't want to say never. But we will put some lighting and let everyone know that it's a curve there that you don't hit the guardrail because it's dangerous.
Thank you. And then, under parks, I attended their meeting last Wednesday, and basically, the park board transferred certain property, which was Clark Football Field, to the Redevelopment Commission in preparation for the auction of single-family lots. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman Warple. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be held Wednesday, April 12th, 1:00 p.m. That is the senior building on Kenwood. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, April 18th, 6:00 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, April 5th, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, April 4th, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue across from Harrison Park. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, March 16th, 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch, we have a date change on this one, will meet Friday, April 14th, 9:15 a.m. at Irving School. The South Holman Neighborhood Watch will meet Thursday, April 13th, 6:30 p.m. at Trinity Lutheran Church on 173rd and Holman. This is a semi-annual meeting, so please come out to hear what's been going on in your neighborhood. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, April 13th as well, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. And once again, I urge everyone to come out and find out about safety measures that you can take to protect you and your family and your property. Most recently, they were talking about the debit cards that you tap and to pay, and then you move on. That transaction is not closed, and somebody can capture your information and clean out your bank account. These are the kinds of tips that we give at the Crime Watch meetings, so please come out and find out what's going on in your community because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vines. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President?
Councilwoman Alexander.
Our sponsorship is available to the U.S. Army 151,000. We're giving away fifteen, one thousand dollar scholarship. They are available from now until March thirty-first at each high school, for students who fill out, we fill in, so all students that are at Hammond Central, Ford, uh, Hare, Bishopville, please, please, please fill out an application. It's not a long application, we're not asking for, we're just asking for an application, and the, uh, the meeting that the scholarship will be pulled will be April twenty-fourth, and we will award them on May twenty-second. So I encourage all students from our Hammond, that are interested, um, to fill out the
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, I believe council as a whole will be bringing out twenty-three oh seven, twenty-three oh eight, and twenty-three oh nine.
Thank you, that's correct. Any other committee reports? Community reports is closed. Next up, ordinance, third and final reading, final passage.
Ordinance twenty-three dash zero seven, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeeper's Tax Fund for Economic Development Purposes in two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Passage of twenty-three oh seven.
Second.
Second.
Twenty-three oh seven has been proposed by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Innkeeper Tax Fund is used for marketing purposes, promotional events, and advertising for economic development for the City of Hammond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on twenty-three oh seven? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes nine zero, eight in chambers, one by electronic.
Ordinance twenty-three dash zero eight, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance amending fund number for FY twenty-twenty-one Justice Assistant Grant Program Funds awarded to the City of Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage of twenty-three oh eight.
Second.
Been a motion for twenty-three oh eight by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spitali.
This grant comes for the equipment for the police department. Fund number twenty-four seventy-two is being moved to twenty-four seventy-five.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple. Rakels.
Yes. Passes nine zero, eight in chambers.
Ordinance twenty-three dash zero nine, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year twenty-twenty-three.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Final passage for twenty-three oh nine, please.
Second.
Been a motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson on twenty-three oh nine. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spitali.
Appropriating the funds set forth with Ex-Hamid number eight to twenty-twenty-three, CDBG, all, and ESG budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes nine zero, eight present in chambers.
President Rakels, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Our next up introduction of ordinances, there are none, there are no resolutions. Number eleven. Next up, number twelve, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yes, I would like to, at this moment, I would like to appoint Leslie M. Miller to the Mayor's Gaming Advisory Committee in replacement of Garrick Alexander.
Been a motion by Councilman Tyler to appoint Leslie Miller in replacing Garrick Alexander to the Mayor's, Mayor's Gaming Committee. Is there any discussion? Second was Spitali, correct? Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, Garrick was unable to fulfill his commitment due to family responsibilities, so I was looking through someone from our district who could step up and take this appointment. Leslie is a business owner from our district, a longtime resident, someone who is very active within our community and supporting our seniors, so excited to have her as a part of this committee moving forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, any other, new and unfinished?
We got to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's vote on this. Any other discussion? I'm sorry. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes nine zero, eight in chambers. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Unfinished business is closed. Next up, public expression. First up, T.J. Gertig? Gertig, okay.
Hi, how's it going, councilmembers? Mr. President, I just had a question regarding the, um, the, the auctioning off of new lots. Where was that at? For, for the new residential development?
It's the new Clark Football Field, or the old Clark Football Fields.
Okay, gotcha.
And it goes to the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay, okay. Do you know how many lots there are?
That I don't.
Somebody could discuss this with you after the meeting. We, we don't answer questions here. This is just a time for you to make your comments.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
I'll talk to you.
All right. Next up, Ken Rosen.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's come to my attention that there's a few people within the council and in the chambers that don't understand the significance of the Briar East Woods. Behind the scenes, some people make, are making false claims that these are, dunes are not what we say they are, the last unprotected remnant of the High Tolston Dunes. Why? Because they're trying to rationalize the destruction of the area. However, they will never say these things in public. It is always in back rooms and behind closed doors. Here are some statements here that I need to reaffirm what these dunes are and what this natural habitat is in Hessville. This is from the United States Department of Interior Fish and Wildlife Service. Elizabeth McCluskey, Ecological Services. The woodland that would be impacted by the proposed project is a remnant of a native sand dune and wetland ecosystem that existed in this portion of Hammond at the time of the city's founding. At the time of the city's founding. This is what it is still today. Emily Stork, Grand Calumet Region Ecologist for the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. I was immediately surprised to see that the dune ridge there is truly an intact geological formation. As soon as I set foot upon it and saw its shape, orientation, and the nature of the plant community there, I knew it was an intact natural area. I'm paraphrasing these, we could go on and on, but I don't have time. And then last, we have Kenneth Schoon, Ph.D., professor at the University of Indiana. This landscape is older than dune and swale landscapes, like Gibson Woods. It was originally formed during the time period when Lake Michigan shoreline was at what it is now, one hundred, what is now one hundred and sixty-ninth street, beginning about four thousand, seven hundred years ago. None of the dune and swale landscape had yet been formed. What that says is that these dunes in the center and the heart of Hessville are almost twice as old as Gibson Woods. Make no bones about it, councilmembers, those of you who support the project are supporting the destruction of an ancient geological treasure in the heart of Hessville, and you're going to have to accept that. That's exactly what it is. No more, no less. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, could I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
An emotion, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's having.